Good evening, everybody. Dave, we ready?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to our November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven work session. Work sessions are a more informal way to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, we have three agenda items. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into our city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will also be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. So, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Would you mind calling the first item?
First item is discussion of the Hopewell House fissure. This is being presented by Lou Oliver.
I'm going to start this one before Lou makes his way here to the podium. This is a more formalized presentation that we started at the last work session. And I said, gosh, we're going to have some more information coming in a month from now. This is that month from now. As you're aware, sorry, but it's important those monitors are up because you're about to see a presentation on them. I'm not going to steal Lou's thunder. Lou and his firm have done a really good job initially documenting the house as it exists today, doing some historical recreation of the house and coming up with a document today that also kind of acts as the other bookmark. And I say the other bookmark, meaning we have a document as the house exists today and then a document that you're going to see portions of tonight that kind of take it back to the best we can determine it to have looked in the early eighteen hundreds. Having said that, then after that presentation's made, we'll start to talk about the next steps. So, without further ado.
Hello, everyone. I don't know if this is -- can you hear this?
Yeah.
I want to introduce two people from my team, John Neath and Dave Carney. John and David did extensive measuring on the house. David went back repeatedly because he's a history addict and crawled under the house, surveyed the sills, had a big conversation with Mr. Day who grew up in the house. And Dave believes that whoever the history guru is from Milton actually needs to talk to Mr. Day quite a bit more and get as much information about the whole area as possible because he's very old. I don't know if he's here tonight, but he was invited. Well, again, this is the Hopewell House. We have labeled it circa eighteen oh five. The eighteen oh five date is really hearsay. And there's documentation that Chris told me about today that dates the house back to the eighteen thirties, just after the gold rush. There's evidence that the house dates back to eighteen twenty because the ceilings are -- seem to be painted by the Moravians who would have come through here in eighteen twenty, as evidenced by the Star of Bethlehem painted on the parlor ceiling. When I owned the house, I did paint matching. I matched chips to the interior colors that existed and took them up to Spring Place, which was Chief Vance's house built in eighteen oh four. And I got a pretty accurate match with all the colors from the ceiling in the Hopewell House with that house, which we think predates it by a year. This is a photograph of the exterior of the house. These modifications, some by me, some by people that renovated the house in eighteen seventies, really changed the appearance a fair amount. The roof would have likely been wood shingled, and there's some evidence of that, that there's some wood shingles existing under this roof on the main body. Mr. Day, I believe, remembers it being five B. Is that right, Dave? The dormers would have been added in the nineteen seventies. The French doors are very nice. I added them. They replaced a wall that was there when I bought the house, gosh, eight years ago, something like that. And it was an earlier porch. This is the side of the house, taken during renovations. These are existing drawings of the house showing additions from all kinds of periods. And if you look at the front elevation, the entire wing to the right was added eight years ago. If you look at the rear elevation, you see that same wing on the left, and you see some protrusions to the left of the chimney in the back. Those would have been additions. And the board and baton to the right would have been an addition or actually an infill of a porch in the nineteen seventies. By the way, there is a -- we don't have the photograph of it, but there's a baby's footprint in the brick on the rear chimney that's very, very clear, just above aisle level to the left, which is very unusual. This is a as-is drawing of the house. I don't think I can use my pointer because you couldn't see it if I could, but the -- shows the -- what is the foyer at the bottom, bottom left, with the French doors, which would have been an original porch. The two rooms on either side of the foyer were, some call them Parsons' rooms, those would be original to the house. The parlors were original, and I'll come back and revise what I just said in a minute because Dave found some other evidence in the house that may point to something a little bit different. But those are fairly original to the house. The parlor on the left shows the Star of Bethlehem painted on the ceiling. It's in incredibly original condition. The candle flickering's still on it to resemble marble. As you go to the rear of the house, there's a kitchen that's central that is, I would say, original to the mid-nineteenth century, but could have been added later. The rest of the stuff to the rear right was a much later addition from nineteen seventy on. The upstairs, we documented because you may want to keep it, but none of the upstairs is original. It was all finished in the nineteen seventies. This shows proposed demolition should you wish to strip the house down to its appearance prior to the mid-nineteenth century. This shows the restoration plans. And when I say restoration, it does not mean we recommend doing this or we advise doing this. It is just something that if you said, we want to make this museum quality and we want to take this back to the appearance that we believe was the early nineteenth century, this would be it. And this came actually with a lot of studying, a lot of verbal accounts that Dave took from Mr. Day, which were very valuable. We really couldn't have done it without that. The doors, we don't have any kind of evidence to tell us whether these were plank doors or whether they would have -- what was very common in the area was called a Christian door. It's just a six-panel door. The finer houses had six-panel doors. The more humble houses had plank doors. This would have certainly been a very nice house for the time, but we still don't know what kind of doors were really on the house originally. This would be the floor plan should you wish to, quote, "restore" the house. So, this strips it down to its essentials. Shows the parlors, the Parsons' rooms, and the rear kitchen and the rear porches that would have been on the house. This is a testament to Dave's grueling work of crawling under the house where there were spiders and snakes, I'm sure, unless Chris has gotten rid of them.
There're ghosts.
There're ghosts and all kinds of nasty things. And this shows the sills and the joists details. Dave, why don't you come up and tell them what you found when you started picking this apart and what Mr. Day told you about this?
I went under the house, documented everything I could find in the way of hand-hewn beams, anything that looked original to the house. And originally, I thought the kitchen had been separated from the main house because there's an extra beam in there. And once I talked to Mr. Day, he said, no, when his granddad had it, there was never a separation. They were always together. So, that tells me that that beam, that extra beam in the back wing of that house belonged to a porch at some point that went all the way across the back of the house. So, there's places on each side of the beam where it's broken. And Mr. Day--
Which beam are you talking -- can I turn this? Does anybody know? I can turn this. No one can turn it.
Yeah.
The projector.
Show the audio switch, Dave.
This beam right here.
Okay, so it's the beam--
Which made me think these were separate features, and there was a pantry right here. Once talking to Mr. Day--
He's talking about--
He told me this back half was--
Right here?
No, up, up.
This one here?
Yes.
Right here. See someone right here?
And this beam. Right now in the house, if you look in there, there is a utility room here that was still siding inside the house where the buildings--
So, we think that was a dog trot between the kitchen and the main house.
But after talking to Mr. Day, he said, no, they were always like this. As far as he knew, there was never a space between. They were always like this, and the side porches were on there when his granddad-- And he was telling me that this wing was built by Mr. Jim Day. So, I don't know too much. Jim Day decorated the house. He said it's highly decorated, had lichen ross, ornamental lichen ross, had metal roofing. And he said it was like the most beautiful house around. Everybody wanted to see it. Granddad told him, he thought he would own the house. And he couldn't believe twenty years later he--
So, you may make a little mental note, there's a central beam running vertically that goes between the two parlors and is cut off at the bottom. So, just kind of note that because it's interesting what you'll see in a second. The house also has fireplaces inside that are -- really, they're a Georgian design. This was the backwoods. It took styles many, many decades to go from the coast to here. So, the chimney pieces are actually a Georgian chimney piece, which is a much earlier style than the actual house, which would have been in the federal period. They have big, segmental arches and quite nice. This is a photograph of the -- what would have been the front porch, now enclosed. And what is interesting about this is that the wood paneling on the back wall was -- when I bought the house, it was painted. And I thought, I'm going to strip it because I like hard pine. And I know it's not original to the house to strip this wood. When we stripped it, we found names of Cherokee families written all over the wall, just like people would come by the house and they would scribble their names. A lot of the names were Day, McCleskey, Doris. So, they're early pioneer in Cherokee families, which I thought was just unbelievable. This is the medallion on the parlor ceiling, which is the Star of Bethlehem. The chandelier's not original to the house. This is the candle flickering done with probably a kerosene lamp or a candle.
Mr. Day was told that it was done with a kerosene lamp. They turned the wick up really high, and he would hold the lantern really close to the ceiling. And said, who wants to buy it, you'll see a circle in the paint because the paint was still wet when they did this, where they actually bumped the lamp up against the ceiling accident. Never do it again.
And this is one of the more interesting drawings because what we believe is that central beam was -- could have possibly been another outside wall. And this shows what the house would have looked like with just the right side being built, and they were called single pins, like humans were barely above animals then, so we had to call a house a pin. But this would have been a single-pin house, we think. And this would have been a natural evolution for this kind of house. The right and the left of the house are actually slightly different dimensions, which kind of further enforced that the house was probably phased. This would have been the house as it would have appeared before the kitchen addition, which we think was probably an addition of some years later, but still likely in the mid-nineteenth century. So, this is what we have to show you. And houses like this are treated in a variety of manners, I'm sure you realize. You can make them into a museum, such as the Tully Smith House at the Atlanta History Center. Really has zero modern conveniences and is viewed as a pure exhibition and as a freeze frame in history. You can restore them back to the original pin, or you can take the idea that, no, I'm going to restore this to what we think it may have looked like in the late nineteenth century, which would have been the fully developed parlors, the Parsons' rooms, and the kitchen, which would make some sense because archaeological accumulations are something that I think we should save. And there are a lot of people, places that do that as well. And then the other thing you can do is you could do a partial restoration and outfit the building for small assemblies and a kind of a community building where you would have a handicap bath and a catering kitchen, for instance. So, you can do a partial restoration and you can outfit the building for some modern And we are here to support you in whatever you elect to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou. Any questions, council, real quick? Lou's here.
I have a quick question.
Julie?
Lou, thank you. Thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
As you go through and talk about those options, one, two, and three, and I know it's so preliminary, do you have some sense of cost or you really didn't go down that path yet?
Well, I think a lot of your cost -- the house was stabilized. I stabilized the house. It actually had no foundations whatsoever. So, the foundations are in. The walls are insulated. The demolition cost, just to tear out the upstairs, to demolish the -- everything that was done in the nineteen seventies, I'm not a demolition expert, but if I had to guess, you're probably looking at fifty thousand dollars. The intact portion of the house is actually in good shape. The chimneys have been rebuilt. They've been lined. The -- there's a new foundation. There's actually insulation in the walls. The ceilings, the ceiling paintings have been restored and consolidated. They were chalking up and just literally flaking away, so they're very stable. The windows have been totally taken out, restored, consolidated, and repuddy glazed, so they're in good shape. So, you would have some basic wiring and plumbing, some new carpentry, a very light catering kitchen and a handicap bath. I can't imagine that being more than demolition and reconstruction. I'm going to say two hundred thousand.
If you did a combination of the demolition and then the kind of retrofit part of it?
Yeah. I'll throw that out, just with all the experience I've had. But it's really -- it'd be hard to have an accurate number without talking to some people. And there are plenty of people that would love this job. It really needs to be a contractor who has a love of craft and who has plenty of time on his hands to kind of hand-sort through things as situations evolve. And really, a very accurate restoration is going to be dependent on somebody who's sort of picking through things and discovering things with your help. Because once you start demolishing everything that was added in the seventies, you're going to find more clues, a few more clues. So--
May I ask you another question?
Site work, site work's hard to estimate depending on what you want to do there, how many cars you want to park, do you want to restore gardens? Do you want to restore the old road bed, which was in front of the house? That was, we think, the old federal road. Most of it's there. There are some areas that has sort of been obliterated. So, site work is sort of -- you would just probably have to have an allowance there of what you want to set aside and how many cars you want to park.
And just final question is, when you looked at the building, did you also do an assessment of any of the outbuildings?
There are -- there are no -- I'll take -- excuse me. There is an outbuilding. It is a barn in front of the house that is -- it is a glorified shack, but it's been there forever. And there's some old timbers in it.
Yeah. It's not in the best shape.
It's in terrible shape. And if I had to guess, it's made up of materials from earlier buildings.
Yeah.
Probably. But I don't think the looks or the form of it's in original condition at all. So, there really are no outbuildings left. Mr. Day had told Dave that there was an old smokehouse to the right of the present house. So, that is something we don't have pictures of, but you could probably get pictures of old smokehouses in the areas that exist still and do what we call a conjectural restoration, meaning is our best guess.
Thank you, Lou.
Karen, I think you have something.
The as-built drawings, so those have square footage and all that of the different rooms and all that on there for us.
We can easily generate that.
Yes. I think that would be important for us as we're trying to decide what to do with it. And before we go and tear down perfectly good parts of the house, if there's another way that we can use -- there's another way we can use the part that's been added on to it, but yet at the same time make sure that the historical integrity of the base part is known and documented.
That's also done all the time. You can set up a display in the living room showing the original appearance of the house, however this happened to it.
Right.
And we're keeping these pieces because they have a practical value. So, yeah, that's also easy to do. We can get you those square footages.
Okay. I think that would be something that would be nice to have.
Bill?
We think they're on there.
It is. It's on the front page of the plate. So, we've--
Okay, good. So, we know how much because the addition to it, especially if you include the upstairs part, it's about twice of what the original double pin is.
Yes, the upstairs, let me tell you this, the stairs are not to code. They're -- the stairs are actually very poorly built inside the house.
I've been on them, yes.
The upstairs is almost dysfunctional. The ceiling heights are so low and ratchety. So, the upstairs would probably be a slight liability issue for the city.
I can tell you the answer to your question. Is it exist today? The first floor heated is twenty-seven seventy-seven. Second floor heated is nine oh six, for a total heated square footage of thirty-six eighty-three.
So, most likely because of liability reasons, the upstairs we would not want to have available for--
Better.
-- community use.
The ceilings bounce.
Right.
Like if there's any load upstairs--
Right.
-- they bounce. The rear left porch is in, which is an enclosed room, is in deplorable condition, and it's not original. So, something -- and there's steps down into it, which is going to be a access issue.
Right.
If I did any -- if you went into it with the philosophy of, we want to keep as much as practically possible to this to use, I would definitely gut the upstairs and just leave it alone. And I would un -- I would demolish the back left porch and just put it back as a porch.
As a porch.
Because it's in -- it's being -- the termites are holding hands to keep it together. There are no active termites, but they were holding it.
They were. Historical termites. The dead historical termites are holding hands.
Yes.
I want to go back to where we could see the whole, yeah, the actual floor plan of the entire. Okay.
Yeah, this is the -- yeah. The -- the quality of the rear right room, which I can't read this from here, Dave, because you have a plate. Who figured? Yes, Dave. Yeah, he has it studied. He's got a fireplace. The quality is not very good. It was a poor addition. The paneling is in no way, shape, or form original to the house. In fact, most of it's stock moldings that have been stained to look old with a few turn of century relics sort of incorporated into it. And it's ramshackle. It's -- but you can use it, having said that.
Bill?
Chris mentioned the area of the first floor, twenty-seven hundred and some feet. Is that the total area, the original house plus the additions?
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, the original house plus additions. And then if you see what's highlighted on the screen in front of you that's now not shaded, the white portion, that's twelve hundred and thirty-three square feet.
So, the additions really doubled the--
Yeah, I'm kidding, almost twice as much.
Then over on the south side of the house, the extreme right addition there has a below-ground space--
There's storage under there.
Right. Question regarding the chimneys. You mentioned that they had been rebuilt, and I've noticed there's different bricks on the base of the chimney than there are in the upper section. Would the original chimneys have been brick or stone?
Well, that's a good question. They could have been brick, and people frequently fabricated their own brick on site. I mean, that was the common thing to do. Many of these chimneys were, of course, masonry on the bottom and wattle and dob on the top originally, which sticks in mud until they caught fire and they decided they better put in brick. That was very common in this period. But we don't know if these were -- we don't know how the chimneys have been altered, really. The one on the right collapsed about ten years ago from the interior, not the exterior. The interior absolutely collapsed, so that had to be rebuilt.
Going back on the north parlor where the medallion is, you talked about using a candle to simulate the marbling in there. Obviously, that was not done by the Moravians, is that correct?
It could have been done by the Moravians, yeah. It could have been.
I thought the account of Mr. Day there would have been towards the end of the century, which would have--
Well, his granddad told him that that was the way he knew it was done, so it could be hearsay of how they did it.
Would that have been typical of what the Moravians had done there?
There's a church in Westville, Georgia, which is a recreated town. It's about this period has the same technique from about eight -- from about, that one it seems like is about eighteen forty. But of course, the Star of Bethlehem is way earlier than the account of the Moravians coming through in the eighteen twenties.
I know Norman Broadwell went to, what was it, Winston-Salem last year.
Yeah.
Wondering if he picked up on any similar treatments.
He was saying you went to Winston-Salem recently?
About a year ago.
And he was wondering if he sent some of the fans of Salem--
I think we need to slow down on some of the mystery aspect stuff. I think the day was strange. How birds walked out from the lottery and maybe heard it before. When the birds-- was a four, when the Byrds had blocked that on four, it was on all four land lots, the beach, the big abstracts, there was Cherokee County, that's still restructured somewhere in the land lots, so, I just think they did research on that. As far as the Moravians, they left the Cherokee territory, and there were three houses up this way, and then the four side, all that, we had to start thinking this, but according to Mr. Day, that happened a little bit later, so, we may have had some guy come through to us and add that, but the van house was restored, so, not an issue, not a direct improvement.
Right. So it's a sketchy history.
Right. Any other questions, probably? Want to certainly thank you and your associates for all the hard work you've put into this.
Thank you, thank you all are very visionary in stepping forward and really preserving this house, thank you.
Okay, before we move on, I know Chris and Kathy have talked about a few things, maybe you could run this by the council.
Maybe just have a bit, have a brief discussion as to, I want to move forward with this and get it open, and also am mindful of the fact that we need to figure out, I guess, what kind of direction we want to go, I don't know that we need to decide that tonight, but there's a couple of different roads I could start to go down, and it would be helpful if I knew which road to start down, at least until I hit a roadblock and decided I needed a different road. You know, we've had the discussion of whether or not it makes sense to keep the available square footage of the structure, and I believe at this point it probably does, at least in an initial exploration, I don't see that there's any need to take part of it and take part of it down, I think that to the extent that we can document or advertise on the inside what portions may have existed in the early 1800s is probably worthwhile to do, but I also don't know that it makes sense to necessarily go out there and start to separate the house apart and take part of it down. One of the things that I would, you know, I'm just going to cut right to the punchline tonight and see if you all agree to it, or if you don't, one of the things that Kathy and I talked about earlier today, that in the last couple of weeks as a matter of fact, that we might be interested in exploring out here, is whether or not this has any opportunity to qualify, much like a project in John's Creek, for some CDBG funding for rehabilitation. I'd like to explore that, I'd like to explore that there may be some funding related to, the one place we qualify for CDBG funding, and that's for the senior community, to see if some of those rehab dollars might be available, if we were going to allow some programming or something in this house during the day that related to seniors, that's a need we need to fill, it's a need we haven't filled as good as we could to this point, this might be an opportunity for us to fill that need, fill, fill that need and qualify for some available funding for rehab. I'd like to strike out there before we go down a different road, and I can't guarantee necessarily that that'll be successful, but we haven't, haven't necessarily launched an exploration yet, I'd kind of like your agreement that that's okay to go ahead and do that, and I would think we would have an answer in the next 30 to 60 days that we could either say success or not, and if that equals no success, then maybe we have a different discussion that talks about uses, but I think this one's kind of staring us square in the face, we have a location, we have a need, and we have a funding opportunity, so, if anybody's-
Yeah, I would certainly, you know, we talked earlier, I'd support that, so, again, it doesn't commit us to anything, it just, it's an option, it's options out there, so, would the rest of the council be okay with, given you've got some time to explore that and get back to it?
That's good, and I'll just reiterate to you, the house is stable at this point, we stabilized it so that it is not deteriorating further, I think it is going to have some good use for us as a city, and allow us to explore that funding opportunity for some re, for some rehab, and we'll come back and report back to you as soon as we've done that.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
Just on the realm of funding, just, and I know you guys are probably going to explore other options, but the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, just wondering are there also potentially some funds out there through the Georgia DNR, I wonder if the Georgia Conservancy Group might have some opportunity for funding, so I think in addition to that, there's probably some other avenues that we might want to walk down, and I just would encourage us to do that, not instead of, but in combination with.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on the next item?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, the first city clerk, please say on the next item.
Next item is RZ 1118, to create Article 6, Division 26 of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 64, of the city code H.
Again, thank you, Lou, and, go ahead.
H Historic District, this is presented by Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, the purpose of the new zoning district is to allow for a historic structure to be used, protected, renovated, and preserved based on its historic value to the community, it allows a specific previous use to continue in the structure where the use would be considered non-conforming as defined in the current zoning ordinance. In addition, it would be implemented in a similar fashion as a CUP, which is a three unit plan, or an MIX, mixed use, whereas the applicant would propose a development standards for the subject site that allows flexibility to conform to grandfathered non-conforming sites. The applicant shall so provide to the staff proof that proposed use previously existed on the subject site, and the use must continue in the original structure. In addition, the structure must be designated as historic by the City of Milton's Historic Preservation Commission, and must be completed prior to the city accepting a re-zoning application to the structure, unless otherwise determined by the community development director, it is in the best interest of the city to process the designation together because of the risk of probable demolition. Lastly, if the permitted use ceases to exist on the subject site for more than six months, the zoning shall revert back to the district in force at the adoption of the zoning ordinance. The H District was first proposed and discussed at a joint work session with the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission on October 24, 2011. The proposed text amendment was on the community zoning information meeting agenda on September 28 of this year, no one was in attendance. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed ordinance on October 25, 2011, and had the following consorts with the proposed ordinance. One, it is their opinion that it is a tool for spot zoning and would create a precedent for future non-residential zones in the area. Two, questions regarding the reversion of your zoning district if use ceases for more than six months. Three, requested that staff provide analysis in the staff report comparing the applicant's retract for development standards of the H District with any concurrent variances required for a traditional zoning district for the site. After further deliberation, the Planning Commission recommended approval five to one of the text amendment with the changes proposed by the Planning Commission. The city attorney then reviewed the text amendment with the Planning Commission recommendations and made the following substantive changes to the proposed ordinance. Under Section 64-953A, attorney, we wrote these paragraphs regarding the city council's ability to write conditions of zoning for the use of the property, no condition is included, the use of the property shall be limited to the most intense use on any property adjacent to the subject property. Section 64-953B clarified the distinction that the H District is only available for property on which proposed historic use is non-conforming under the existing zoning district. In addition, the paragraph outlines the requirements to establish the previous historic use in the site. Section 64-953G deleted the reversion language based in the version of zoning procedures law, which does not permit automatic reversion of zoning without notice of hearing. And lastly, Section 64-954 wrote additional language to state the city council shall consider the properties overlay district and the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the proposed historic use as well as other reasonable conditions of zoning. However, the council's zoning conditions shall have precedence over any conflicting requirement, regulations, standards, on either the overlay district or zoning ordinance regulations. A clean version of the proposed H District is attached for your review that incorporates the city attorney's recommendations. In addition, a redlined version that includes changes recommended by the Planning Commission and a redlined version of the city attorney's recommendations are included for review. The staff is available to answer any questions.
At this point, does anyone have questions?
Thank you, Mayor, so the first, the first attachment here, page two of two, that's the clean version with the attorney comments?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a couple more questions, where were, where did we get the six months from? The six months provided, let's say we, it's changed into a historic zoning and there's a use specified for that property, and if that site is, or that use ceases to exist in six months, then it reverses back, where do we get that six months from?
I'm going to ask Rob, that's the type of reversion for a, let's say if you apply for a business license and that business ceased operation, then typically you would have to reapply after six months.
Okay, do we know how many properties right now would meet this, this prior use category?
Right now, we don't have any of them that have been designated, so technically right now, there's zero.
Do we have, do we have candidates?
But we have about, I believe there was about three that Angela had come up with.
And do you know where those are?
There's the Hardeman store at Hopeville, and there's the store up at 140 and the Cherokee line, and then I don't know, there was one more, but it was like basically just a couple of walls.
It's the one right across the street from where you're at. Yeah, the site, the building sort of falling down, sort of dangling across from the Hardeman store.
Oh, the one that's got like a big sign on it that, at the same page.
Has a car in the front.
Yeah. So there's not very many.
Doors. White store.
Yeah.
And then as far as the applicant having to provide proof, the way I'm reading this is really all the applicant, all the applicant has to do is provide a personal affidavit saying that it used to be a store, that's all they have to do.
That's correct, under the, under the revision council, but also be mindful that it's going to be required that they otherwise have a historic structure and meet the other requirements of the historic structure obligation before they can even do that, so there's already going to be sort of a safeguard in there with respect to applying to this.
And does the historic structure have to be usable at the time of the rezoning? I mean, does, can it be falling in and it have to be rebuilt from the ground up with the, given historic zoning, or does it have to be a usable structure to begin with?
I don't know if this zoning designation speaks to that, the usability of the actual structure we're talking about, I mean, the whole purpose of this, though, is to allow that structure to somehow be viable and sort of let there be a financial incentive to keep it up, so I guess the assumption would be that it might not be in terribly good effect, but it doesn't speak to it.
Yeah, I think the assumption is to save it, and how that's defined is, I guess, it's something.
I think that, but I think to the point, that would be a consideration for the council to take into effect when it's considering one of these zonings is, you know, you're going to be presented with, you know, individuals coming before you wanting to make use of this property, and if you're looking at a building that's about to fall in, I'm sure that will affect perhaps some of the conditions that you'll put on that property with respect to making it work.
Okay.
I would assume.
And Ken, was it your intent in 64-953D for that not to be mandatory language?
Is this the must, shall, concern?
Yes, yes, I know that you made a lot of changes to what the Planning Commission came, I like your changes a lot better than what the Planning Commission had come up with, but-
I like shall, Commissioner Todd.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with shall, though.
All right, that's all I have.
Where it says must, I'm comfortable with saying shall first be designated, I think that's fine, I think that's consistent with where we can go.
Okay, you mean shall be completed?
Can you confirm that just for a minute, so you're suggesting that the shall, that they would not be required to have a variance, or that they would?
No, just any structure for which a non-conforming historic use is proposed shall first be designated as historic, which is exactly what we-
It would have to be historic first by the HPC.
Right, and again, on the second sentence, the historic designation process shall be completed prior, again, must is equally compelling, but shall is the debate ultimately.
Okay, Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, just with regards to the concerns, and this may be a combination of Kathy and Ken, but this does, in some cases, present the opportunity to bypass our comprehensive land use plan. The three properties that you mentioned, at least two of those within our comp plan indicate that that's an area where commercial is not considered appropriate, and that's obviously a document that was recently accepted. Can we speak to how staff anticipates, taking into consideration, this historic zoning district being proposed versus the importance and the precedence of our comprehensive land use plan, and what is put forth within that land use plan?
Well, I, I think it's a balance clearly between what, one, you're asking the same which should be, and then the other issue of saving historic structures, and I think the intent of this ordinance is to come up with a process by which the HPC and then the city council can look at that and determine whether or not indeed this structure is worth saving, and keeping in mind that there are certainly other documents, but this allows you to override that in a sense, by virtue, again, the quid pro quo is that you're saving that historic structure.
And I guess one of the questions I have is to your point, is that it's a balance. What I don't see within this document, and I'd ask for consideration, would be that it doesn't seem to speak to those other documents that are important, it speaks to the overlays in terms of development standards, but I think it might be important, if this were to proceed, that it speaks to the fact that a consideration needs to be the comprehensive land use plan, because as we all know, as we've gone through this historic preservation process, it's one thing to say that you support historic preservation, it's another to say, well, gee, just because you have a structure, does that mean that that should be what supersedes a comprehensive land use plan as it relates to agricultural land versus commercial and the introduction of commercial uses in areas that were never intended for commercial use? So I would think it would be important to at least give consideration to that comp plan within this document as a consideration. I'd also be interested in Kathy, if you could just speak to this, just for purposes of kind of reminding all of us about the process that would be required in terms of this historic preservation committee, and, because obviously there's a process that they have to go through, and they can't just say, gee, it's old and therefore we're going to support it. Can you just briefly touch on that process and what would be required as that first step when it goes to the historic preservation committee?
Yeah, maybe I'm going to let Robin, you could talk a little about what the intent was, your institutional memory.
Right, I haven't thought of it much. The HPC, Angela usually has this commission, so, from what I understand, there's an application for the designation of a historic property, and then Angela receives it, she's her staff member that handles that department or that commission, and reviews it and then submits it to the commission, the HPC, and then they review it, and then after that, I'm not sure what happens, so if anybody wants to pick in, horizontally, about, I believe that you guys evaluated and made a decision, correct?
Yes, and we make a recognition for whatever part of it goes to the council.
And then it goes to you all to even determine that, whether it was something, if it was any kind of building, it's going to come to you for your confirmation, proving it as a historic property, so you're going to see it beforehand anyway as well.
And I guess where I was going, just with that line of inquiry, is just, my recall was that part of what would allow the historic preservation committee to determine if a structure was indeed historic and therefore even under consideration, was that it had to meet some standards, and I think that as part of this, it would be helpful, this is still going to come to us as a second presentation item next week, is that part of that really should include what are the requirements under the HPC specifically, just in case any of those have changed, because what we're saying is that that's a first required step, so we need to be clear that none of those steps have changed since we last saw it, because it's been quite a while. As an example, the introduction now, that a mere affidavit by a person that owned that land could stand as legal evidence, that historically was not the case, I mean, someone simply saying, yes, it's historic and therefore I attest to it, I personally have issue with that, I don't think that that is evidence from a legal perspective, I think that we really need to give consideration to whether or not a personal affidavit meets the standard of- to whether or not a personal affidavit meets the standard of legal evidence, especially when you're looking at something that could undermine a comprehensive land use plan that's been put in place. So personally, what I'd like to see is more details from what the HPC would require as a process. Secondly, I would ask for consideration that a personal affidavit would not meet the legal language of evidence. I think you need to have evidence. And we've gone through that with some structures. And I think that's why indeed some of those structures, it was identified that there was no proof. And so I think we need to be clear what legal proof really means. And then the other, I think, would be to include language and make reference to the fact that the comprehensive land use plan is not a document to be ignored, but in fact, needs to be part of the evaluation.
Can I just insert, I can just go through, there's like three items.
That'd be great. Thank you, Robin.
From the HPC ordinance. It says, "HPC's documentation of proposed designation. After the HPC's recommendation to the Milton City Council of a property or district for historic designation, the HPC shall prepare a report for nomination consisting of, A, a detailed physical description of the proposed historic property or historic district, and a statement of historical, cultural, architectural, and/or aesthetic significance of the proposed historic property or historic district, and a map showing district boundaries and classification, contributing or non-contributing of individual properties therein, or showing boundaries of individual properties, and a statement justifying the boundaries of the proposed property or district, and representative photographs of the proposed property or district. Criteria for selection, that's for the historic district." So that's basically, that's part of it. And then designation of historic property, criteria for selection of the properties, an individual building or structure deemed worthy of preservation by reason of value to the nation, the state of Georgia, or the city of Milton for one or more of the following reasons: it is an outstanding example of a structure representative of its era, or it is one of the few remaining examples of past architectural style or type over 50 years old, or it is a place associated with an event or person or historic or cultural significance to the city of Milton, or it is the site of natural, archaeological, or aesthetic interest that contributes to the cultural or historical development inherited to the municipality, county, state, or region. And finally, no building, structure, site, or object shall be eligible to be designated historic unless it has existed on the same property since the incorporation of the city of Milton. So those were the criteria. And we can reference that section definitely, if that's something that you would like to save.
I just think it's important that we're clear that there be proof and that proof be more than simply a personal affidavit. I think as the saying goes, trust but verify. And I think that this is too important when you look at the risk of spot zoning. This is not a new topic. We've talked about this and how it applies to potential spot zoning. And in particular, when you have three properties. And obviously, two of those are clearly in a non-commercial area.
Sure. I think it's important to put that information right into this document so it's there, it's not in some other location. So we can do that.
Thank you.
Karen?
I've been working with Fulton County. I've tried to preserve the historic structures in Northwest Fulton for more than 20 years now. I'm glad to finally see us getting to a point that I think we're going to be able to preserve some of these because probably two-thirds of the ones we initially, on our first map identified, are now gone. And I think that we were initially a crossroads community, several crossroads communities up in this area. I think it's very important we do everything we can to preserve those structures. I believe that this H district allows us to preserve them without having the spot zoning, which I think is really the intent of it, is because it's not spot zoning, it's historic zoning. It absolutely, and I want to verify this with our city attorney, it does not create any kind of precedence for other commercial around it just because this is currently a historic zoning that might have a commercial use. Is that correct?
With these limitations in the code?
Yes, I can.
So it does not set a precedence for, to allow another commercial property next door that would not qualify for the historic?
No. I think that for someone to come in and say that they ought to be entitled to a commercial use because a historic property next door with an historic structure on it has one, no. I can't, I don't think that's at all permitted.
Okay. Well, I think that we really need to do whatever we can to preserve these, the few remaining historic structures that we do have. And so I'm comfortable with what the attorney has here. And I look forward to putting something in place to go ahead and get them preserved.
Anybody else? Bill?
I'll jump on that one, too. We've been talking about this issue, preserving historic structures here for over four years. And I think the historic preservation commission's done a yeoman job of putting all of these requirements together, along with the input from the planning commission and certainly oversight by our city attorney. And to come to this point in time and start imposing other restrictions on this ordinance, I think is, I think puts the remaining structures in peril. We're going to lose whatever we have left out here. Remember when the survey was done back in 2003, 2004? There were dozens of historic structures identified and cataloged at that time. And I would venture to say there's probably less than a dozen of them left here in the city of Milton. So I think we need to move forward with this and quit tweaking it, wordsmithing it, and get on with it. And so we can preserve whatever we have left out here.
Can you jump?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think that we've put a lot of work into this, as both Karen and Bill mentioned. And I trust that the thought that's gone into the commission itself, the structure, the rules outline, you know, the work that they're going to do, I trust that they're going to be able to use that and make good decisions based on it. The fact that we've got both the commission and the council in the process to approve these applications, I think gives us enough checks and balances to make sure that it's not abused or it's not used in the wrong way. So I'm excited to see this move forward.
Okay. Anybody else? Julie?
Thank you. One, just a couple of quick points is that historic preservation is absolutely critical. I think it's also important to note that we can preserve history within Milton without necessarily converting an AG1 property to commercial within a non-commercial area. And that is the balance that we have to strike. A lot of the structures that were taken down were taken down illegally. And they were taken down in the middle of the night without appropriate permits from Fulton County and north of the city of Milton. And of course, we need to guard against that. But we also need to make sure that we don't presume that every building that's historic also needs to be converted to commercial. And so therefore, that is a balance. We've got citizens that have voiced their concerns about spot zoning. I think it would be irresponsible of us to ignore those concerns. And so obviously, as we go through this process, being able to reference those documents that have merit remains important. And I think it's important also to note that the timeline actually goes back. And when we first put forward a historic preservation ordinance, we had some deliberation about whether or not this component should remain. I was on record as indicating that it did not belong in that historic preservation document because it went and was opposed to what the state recommended. And yet, there was a majority that moved that forward. What happened was that the state then had to put a halt on it because it was not appropriately positioned in the historic preservation document. So I just want to make clear that any delay was actually because this document had no business where it was. It needed to be under the zoning category. So I think for the record, that's important to state. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
One last question.
Karen?
We're, we are not converting agricultural uses to commercial. We're just allowing previous commercial uses to be able to use as, be able to use as they originally were when they were initially built. Is that correct? I mean, we're not taking a house and suddenly allowing it to go to a store. We're taking an old store and allowing it to be used again as an old store or an old, whatever it is. My only concern is the fact that there are a couple uses, and I don't think any of these would be, where they were old gas stations and they were your old-fashioned one-pump gas station. We have one in Crab Apple. I want to make sure that that will never become, just because it is historical, it's not going to ever become a gas station with multiple pumps. So when we're talking about the structure itself, it would also mean the things like that outside of the structure cannot be expanded.
No expansion.
Okay. So even, I know it's just no expansion in the house, but it wouldn't be, I mean, of the structure, but it would not be expansion, would not be allowed of, you know, like I said, the old gas station in Crab Apple originally had one pump. It can never be allowed to go and have multiple pumps or anything. Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. Bill?
I just want to set the record straight here. I think statements have been made here that presupposes that every historic structure out here is going to be converted to commercial. We talked about one in the first topic tonight, the Hopewell House. And I would hope that we would designate that as historic here in the short, in the near future. Another one that comes to mind is the double branches voting booth. To say that we revert or convert that to commercial use out here, I think is kind of preposterous. And to imply or infer that every historic structure out here is going to be made commercial and it's spot zoned, I think is kind of misleading.
Okay.
I think we've got the direction we need.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just, I just want to mention one thing. And just make sure for the record that our terminology, at least to the law, is correct. I think of the difference between spot zoning and precedent. And one of the questions from Councilman Rutherford was precedent. And I stand by what I originally said, that I don't think there's going to be a negative precedent that if we zone something, this H designation, that might allow a use that perhaps is different than what had historically been on that property in the immediate present, that we therefore are opening up a precedent for those around it to then come in and say, oh, I want a commercial zoning, well, give me one, give me one. Because again, you've got a lot of checks along the way. One of them is, of course, you've got to have historic property or a structure on your properties. That's sort of the big one. So that's my precedent answer. Spot zoning, to me, is different. Spot zoning, to me, and that's a check that any zoning code has to have in it because that's not necessarily something peculiar to an H zoning designation. Georgia law just doesn't allow spot zoning. It doesn't matter how it's addressed up or in what particular code it's in. So that's an altogether different issue. I just want to make sure they understand that. And so when I'm talking about precedent, I'm not talking about spot zoning. The comments that we plugged into here, I think, address the spot zoning issue, particularly where we say, in the absence of any further direction by you, the uses are going to be comparable to what is allowed in the immediate vicinity. I really like that because that's a good check against spot zoning because the whole notion of spot zoning is dropping manufacturing in the middle of agriculture for no reason as to why you did it. And we specifically try to wrap your way through that. Just throw that out.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Please call the next item. Do we, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we do not. Next item is discussion with Eric Bozeman, consultant from Urban Collage regarding LCI Highway 9 planning study.
Mayor, Council, I want to offer this as an opportunity tonight for you all as the elected officials to have an opportunity to directly interact and engage with Eric from Urban Collage. Over the last couple of weeks, there's been some questions raised with respect to some of the information that was presented in a public meeting over 10 or so days ago, maybe a couple of weeks ago now. And, you know, we issued a memorandum of clarification that came from Urban Collage. And I just thought it was appropriate for us to be able to move forward with this process to have the opportunity to see if you all in a direct one-on-one opportunity with Eric have questions that you might want to ask him. So having said that, I will turn it over to Eric and let him say what he wants to say. And then we'll see if anybody has any questions.
Okay. And I just want to thank you, Eric, for your time and your willingness to come talk to us. So appreciate that.
Glad to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris. Very quickly, just seeing you an update on the process. A key piece of these LCI plans is how the process unfolds. The way that we've structured this process is it's three phases. The first phase is an inventory and assessment of existing conditions where we and our team of subconsultants are providing an independent review of what we see on the ground today. That's followed by two very active public work sessions that right now are scheduled for December and after the first of the year to engage the public on rolling up their sleeves and getting them involved in the detailed planning for the future of the activity center. And then the third phase is the action plan, prioritizing projects, putting dollars and responsibilities to those, and lining them up so that this plan moves very quickly from the last piece of planning that you do in this area to move towards implementation of zoning changes in projects that are reflective of the public will in that area. What we've done to date is we've conducted stakeholder interviews in late September and early October. We do that in order to bring community leaders in to have a very open, frank discussion with those individuals. We ask them to be very frank. To that extent, we in turn keep those comments confidential. We don't attribute them to individual persons. So we can talk a little bit about that if that's necessary. We had a core team meeting on October 19th. The core team is our primary focus group for the process. We gave our draft presentation, slides, the same presentation that we were to give to the public to that core team of about 15 to 20 community individuals, stakeholders, property owners, land owners. Based on their feedback on the evening of October 19th, we made a few modest changes to the presentation, delivered that to the public on the evening of October 27th. The purpose behind this first set of meetings that we've had, the stakeholder meetings followed by the core team and the public meeting, is really to provide an introduction to the process, to provide an informational presentation. It's not meant in any way to be construed as recommendations. What we're trying to do is give good information to the public so that then the public can give us input into the key characteristics and preferences that are to guide the plan as we get into that active engagement section in the second phase of the plan. So to date, that's what we have done. I understand that there are some questions and comments. I'm happy to answer those.
Okay. Let's start with council. Any questions?
I have some.
Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight, Eric. Chris, did you, were you able to print off a copy of the RFP indoor contract for?
I can. I mean, yeah, if.
I had requested that for the purposes of this discussion.
I can go get it. I don't, I don't have it prepared, but I'm happy to go get it.
Is Michelle here to provide some insight into the, is Michelle here?
Yeah.
Oh, hey, Michelle, okay. And I had provided these questions to you in advance. I understand that Mr. Lagerblum had provided these to you as well, Eric. Is that correct? Okay. The first one being, in terms of the sustainability comment, The first one being, in terms of the sustainability comment, and I'm just going to focus merely on this sustainability comment, and then my questions are going to go into commercial development. The first one has to do with the, the comment that was made, both in the core team meeting on October 19th, as well as the public meeting on October 27th, that said that 86 percent residential property tax versus 14 percent commercial property tax is not sustainable. Do you recall making that comment on the slide?
Yes.
Okay. My first question has to do with whether or not the RFP that was used to secure your, secure you as a consultant, as well as your contract. And I'm trying to figure out, since that to me is a more sweeping comment that would apply to the entire city, not just the study area, which is the Wimward Highway Nine area, could you, one, explain to me how your, your RFP, your contract, how'd you make that statement? And two, how that statement has anything to do necessarily with the specific study area versus the entire city? And, and why you needed to make that statement, since you've been hired to only look at the study area?
Sure. The, um, the RFP on page 18 outlines the project deliverables, past three, the project deliverables. The first piece of that is that the LCI study document will result in a plan that specifically addresses the following. A under that is the efficiency and feasibility of land uses and mix appropriate for future growth. Based on that comment, our proposal, which I think is an addendum to the contract, outlines the scope of the market analysis. That says that we will, will involve an overview of the area's demographic and economic characteristics to determine current market characteristics and future market potential. The analysis will evaluate the surrounding market area to help identify current and future demand for various markets and development plans.
Okay.
We think that it's very important, when we're looking at a study area, that we consider the surrounding market area, particularly for commercial development, where those dollars are coming from. You can't just plan the commercial area without considering the residential around it. We would also say that's very much the same thing in terms of protecting single-family neighborhoods. One of the issues that often comes up in LCI plans is that if we're talking about higher intensity development in activity centers, if that's appropriate, and we haven't determined that in this area, that's, that's part of the next phase. But certainly, there's always a concern that what's going on next door may impact single-family neighborhoods nearby. And so while our specific study area is mostly the commercial area, we're very concerned with looking around the boundaries of that area, and from a commercial standpoint, looking at the market area, because those influence the supply and demand of land uses within that area. So it is commonplace during these studies that we not just focus on the study area as it's geographically outlined, but that we're looking at the market area, which not only includes other parts of Milton, but parts of Alpharetta, parts of John Creek, even Forsyth County for folks that are coming in and shopping here. We have to be cognizant of those larger issues as we plan for the specific study area.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the, the comment itself, 86 percent residential tax versus 14 percent commercial property tax not being sustainable, when, when I met with you previously, you explained that that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily a comment regarding financial sustainability. Then what kind of sustainability was it?
Yeah, what we're looking at is the balance of land uses. And typically, as we're looking at that, we're looking at residential, commercial, different types of those. In some cases, industrial, I don't think that's a factor here that's under heavy scrutiny. But then we're also looking at transportation demand, at parks and open space, at infrastructure. To that extent, our economic subconsultants are tasked with looking at the overall view of the area and providing their independent expert opinion on sort of the lay of the land, of what the issues and strengths and weaknesses are. I, I think it's absolutely appropriate and important to point out during the information gathering stage, the, the data portion of that, the 86 percent commercial, 14 percent residential. I think what our marketing did, in my discussions with them in particular over the last couple of weeks, when, when they see that number, it raises concern for them. Now, I think in going further and saying that's not sustainable, I, I think that was not intended to be, in fact, I know it was not intended to be definitive. I, I think it was poorly worded and should have been more sensitively stated. What they're looking at are benchmarks, they're looking at national planning, smart growth principles, they're looking at your adjacent communities. I, I think there's a little bit of a lack of sensitivity there for the appreciation of how unique Milton is. You're, you're not Alpharetta, you're not John's Creek, you're not Roswell. You're dealing with a different set of numbers. Does the 14 percent commercial tax base raise a concern? I, I think for our market consultants, absolutely, it raises a concern. But I think they're saying that that's not sustainable, and are emphasizing that should have been more sensitive and needed to recognize some of the other factors that you all are dealing with. I, I think it's an important element as part of this planning process, because I think we have to plan, being cognizant of all those issues and challenges around us. Whether this plan's going to do anything about that is, or whether it's even necessary, is a matter of public input and city policy. It's not our goal to change that. It's our process to bring that forward as an issue, if it's something that is a flag to our consultants and our subconsultants, and have a fruitful public discussion about whether that impacts what we do in the future. And that was really the purpose behind it.
So when they looked at that, when they looked at that statement, that 86-14 statement, and, and before they derived that statement, did they consider, I, I heard you say that they considered what other surrounding municipalities, what works for them, basically? And I think that's what you said, and not, in, in a lot more words than that, in your clarification memo. And in addition to that, you took into account stakeholder interviews, and specifically business owner stakeholder interviews. And I think this is where you're going to tie in what you said earlier, those, those interviews are confidential, is that what you're saying? Including who made those, who, who you interviewed that's confidential?
I, I would, I would point out, there are, there are three different groups that we've talked to. One was a set of stakeholder interviews that were set up by city staff that I and one of my colleagues from Urban Collage facilitated. There was the core team that we met with on the 19th, that had the preview of all the information, and were our primary focus group.
And I have a list of the core team.
Okay. And then there were the third set, which were the landowner and developer and other interests that our market consultants interviewed. And I neither have those contacts nor think it's appropriate to divulge who those were. When the market consultant went out to those individuals, they stated that those would be confidential interviews, that they would not share or attribute information to individuals. And so to that extent, they are unwilling to give me that information of who they have talked to.
Did you interview staff to do that at all? Staff in terms of what our financial condition is, or what our forecast is, and to making that? Because what I'm hearing so far, let me just restate what I'm hearing, to make sure I'm clear. You looked at other cities around us to see what works for them. You interviewed business owners and large landowners to find out what their opinion is. And from that, you made a determination that an 86-14 percent ratio was not sustainable.
I think we, we also talked to-
Although you, you recognize that's not a-
We also talked to other community members and stakeholders. We had, had a meeting with staff. We have reviewed the proposed budget for next year. I'm not sure if that's been adopted yet, when we reviewed it, it's a draft and proposed on it. Again, I don't think it was intended to be a sweeping statement. I think it was intended to be an observation by our market consultant.
Okay. Let me see what other. And what cities did you use in that comparison?
They, they've looked at many. The only ones I have numbers for are your adjacent cities, but they were, RCL Co. works throughout the country. They've conducted a number of fiscal analysis. They've seen everything from 30 percent to over 50 percent. I, I think, again, they're looking at 14 percent and saying that raises a flag, because we don't see that very often. But they have not done a detailed fiscal analysis in order to make that as a definitive statement.
Did they look at any cities that were similarly situated? Because arguably, there's no other city like us in the state of Georgia, and maybe not even the southeast, in terms of the ratio of property tax that we do have, and the property values that we have in terms of residential. Did they look at any cities in the country, since they have all this expert, you know, staff to be able to look at financial analysis? Did they look at any cities that were similarly situated, anywhere?
I don't, I don't have that information with me. I have to ask them.
Okay. And then that statement in general, I'm, I'm wondering, because it is a sweeping statement, and I've already explained to you how sweeping it can and was, and how it was politicized in this last election, and how our staff doesn't agree with your statement. I'm wondering if making a statement like that could affect the marketability of our city in terms of either residents or business owners wanting to come here? And if business owners are wanting to come here and need money to be able to develop here, does a statement like that, a sweeping statement like that, that almost makes it sound like we're not going to sustain or survive, or we're going to go bankrupt, or something like that, does that affect the marketability of our city or ability for banks to lend money to business owners who might want to come here?
Not, not in our opinion. This was, this was two words out of a 40-minute informational presentation, to which we compared Milton's homeownership, income, jobs and housing patterns to national and regional averages. I, I think it's fair for our market consultant to say, this is far out of line from what the national average is. I, I think you are intimating that as well, that this is a very unique situation. It's not average, it's not typical, it's not traditional, it's very different. Again, I think they could have been more sensitive with the statement. I think we could have been more sensitive with the statement. But going through the process and outlining the presentation, we did hear that from folks in our stakeholder interviews as well. I, I mean, I would be remiss if I said, our economic consultants came in, and they came in with this bombshell that we didn't hear from anybody else. If, if we hadn't heard it from anybody else that, that we had interviewed and talked to, it would have raised a concern with us. But it didn't raise a concern with us, it didn't raise a concern with the core team. We in no way intended for it to be a political statement.
Right.
We're not involved in the political sphere, and are trying to not be involved in any way. Our, our job was to report information. Again, I think the, the two words in particular could have been more sensitive. And then I have to hold our, our subconsultants at fault for that.
Well, I guess my concern is, you know, I would, I would expect, if you're using a, your stakeholder group, stakeholder group which is confidential, if that stakeholder group is composed of, of business owners, people in the business community, large land owners, and in, in, are, are, were all of them inside the study area, or were you talking outside the study area as well? I think that's very important to note.
Yeah, they, they talked, they talked about.
Okay, so you, so you-
I mean, our, our core team is, is folks that are all in the study area. And again, it's not just commercial property owners and large landowners. I mean, these are our neighborhood residents, they're community leaders, they're parks and open space people. I think our core team, to my understanding, is a fairly good cross-section of this board of cities.
No, I'm not talking about the core team, I'm talking about the stakeholder team that you interviewed.
The, well, again, there were two sets. There were one that we interviewed, that the staff set up on a land use, much of the CPAC Committee, folks that have been involved in the city for many years. The group that our real estate folks talked to were both internal and external, both folks that own and develop property here in Milton, and folks in the larger real estate community. I, I think it's valid for them to do so. It's very important how this study area is perceived within the larger market area if we're going to plan appropriately for its future.
And I guess my concern is, you know, the, the statement that was made, and you've, you've acknowledged several times that that, that was a, that wasn't a, that you could have been more sensitive to the statement. I guess from a consulting point of view, and the fact that, how much money are we paying Urban Collage for the study?
The total project cost is $100,000, which are, matches $20,000. ARC funds $80,000.
Okay, so $100,000, and I guess as a consultant, you're being paid $100,000, I would hope that you would be not only more sensitive to the statements that you make, but more importantly, that you would not apply a boilerplate in your analysis of our city. If you've acknowledged, and our staff acknowledges, that our, that our city is different, it cannot be compared to cities that are around us, but yet, when you come in and you're paid $100,000 to perform an analysis, you perform an analysis based on similarities with other cities, and, and basically a boilerplate, one-size-fits-all approach, which to me seems like a failure in the, in the, in the cardinal role of consulting, is to know your client. That's my concern, and that's my, my concern that I expressed to you before, Eric. And it remains my concern. We also have the concern that staff, and I've shared this with, with Chris as well, we have the concern that staff didn't intercede, interfere, or stop that statement from being made, even though staff doesn't agree with that statement, and the statement was allowed to go forward. So, you know, you're not, you're not all to blame for this. But I would ask that if your, your contract continues going forward, that you don't apply a boilerplate to the city, that, you know, you're being paid $100,000 to give us good work, not something that's one-size-fits-all, that, you know, would work for everybody else. You know, the, the comments and statements that led into, and the financial analysis that, which some of the people on this board were a part of, that spoke to the financial sustainability of the city, factored in things like the residential property tax valuation, and how different it was compared to other areas. I would have expected things like that to, to factor into your determination before you made statements like that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you. I'm a little perplexed by the comment that any of the interviews would be confidential. And I would like our city attorney to speak to that. I, I just think that, one, any, any process, and one, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the work that you've been doing. I do agree that we need to make sure that we are analyzing our city based on our city, because it's obviously a unique place that so many people want to see retain its characteristics. But in terms of confidentiality, is there anything, Mr. Gerard, within the contract with Urban Collage that would allow interviews to be confidential? I, I just didn't realize that we had anything that kept those confidential.
No, I've not reviewed the contract this evening with that specific question in mind, but, but given that you've asked me the question, I'll answer it just, put it on my, sort of my open records hat, if you don't mind. And I think just, I can tell you this, to the extent that this is a city contract, and also, I think another participant is a state government entity as well that's also funded it, it's going to be subject to the Open Records Act. And any documentation generated under the contract will be subject to the Open Records Act. And so to the extent that there are notes and other documentation affecting field reviews and things of those dangers, they will be subject to the act. And so I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to, kind of at least a bit adversarial, of course, but I'm, I'm not sure upon what basis, there would be a, a basis to keep that hidden if there was an Open Records Act. I think that it would certainly have to be fully covered.
And I guess the concern, this was the first time that I've heard that any interviews with stakeholders would be considered confidential. And to me, that's kind of a global issue for us as a city. In particular, it's taxpayer dollars that are helping to fund an outside consultant, whether it would be Urban Collage or anybody. I would hope, and I think that what would be important out of this work session, at least a request of this council member, would be that we assess when we do anything, whether it be an LCI, or a Crabapple Master Planning Initiative, or something that one day will be a 140 Initiative, whether or not, as a city, we're really allowed to keep interviews confidential, but become the basis of analysis and the basis of recommendation. That is concerning to me. And this is the first time that I had heard that interviews with stakeholders that become data points for our consultants would ever be considered confidential. I find that troubling. And I, I think we should all find that troubling, because my goodness, this is, should be an open and transparent process. And so maybe, Eric, and maybe that was just a generic statement? Maybe you didn't mean that in, from a legal perspective?
I, I specifically asked our market consultant exactly the question that I was asked by Councilmember Tark via, via email, and they refused to divulge that information. They, when they hosted those interviews, when they had those interviews, they told the interviewees, when they started the interview, that it was a confidential interview. They're not willing to break that confidentiality.
And I guess the question then, just we as a city, because obviously, that's an extension of our contract, was there anything within our contract that allows for confidentiality to be promised? And/or if there's a subcontractor with anybody with whom we've contracted, if that's not part of the contract? I just don't understand how that would be considered confidential. So I would hope that our open records laws and sunshine laws, and everything else that applies to, to government, would apply to this contract as it would to any contract. And so, Chris, I don't know, can you maybe just speak to what a, a next step would be in terms of just assessing confidentiality and stakeholder?
Well, I don't know if I'm going to have an answer for you tonight, because I need somewhere embedded in the document to decide if answers that question. So I'm happy to look into that tomorrow and see if I can get you a better answer.
Look, I just, I find it perplexing that we would ever have something that we would then in turn keep from our citizens, which would be part of a transparent process. And to, just to make sure I'm clear, Ken, is that I heard you saying that, when you talked about being adversarial, you meant that you didn't want to be necessarily adversarial with our consultant, but that you're not aware of any-
Correct.
-thing that would allow for confidentiality.
Right, and I, in good faith, I've heard, you know, this gentleman indicate that, that his folks, or at least the folks that he interviews, feel like promises were made and that confidentiality was guaranteed. And I certainly understand and respect that. My only concern is, is that when it's city dollars or state dollars, being funded to implement a contract, it's difficult to make those kinds of assurances. That's the world you live in, the world I practice in.
And I would just say that based on that, I find it that much more important that we would have access to information in any stakeholder interviews that had been made, and/or any promises, if there was anything in writing that was provided from a third party to a stakeholder. I can't imagine why confidentiality would be important. So I just look forward to more information. Thank you, Chris, for following up on that.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for you? Ken?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of quick comments. Since I was the person who initially looked at whether or not the city of Milton was sustainable or feasible before we ever became a city, I looked at it from one point of view, and one point of view only, is could we deliver the same level of services that we were currently receiving under Fulton County, and could we afford to do that? And that was the, that was the only really point that we were looking at, is could we receive the same level? And I've determined, based on my analysis of the, the numbers that we were able to get from Fulton County, and also the studies that were done, that yes, we were sustainable at that level of service. Now, I appreciate the fact that y'all, as professionals, are willing to look at what level of service surrounding cities, counties, deliver to their residents, because I believe that the level of service is the real key here. The level of service we were receiving as residents of unincorporated Fulton County was about as low a level as you could ever get. And it has been my opinion, based on what I have heard from our residents, that they really want a little higher level of service. They want parks, they want intersections fixed, they want roads paved, they want sidewalks to walk on. And I think that that's really what the key is. So I do appreciate you and other professionals looking at this from an independent point of view, to letting us know that, you know, what we need to do, whether or not we can provide, what level of service that we can provide to our residents, you know, based on what we have now, and based on whatever changes, the residents may decide that they want to make in order to have a higher level of service. So thank you for being willing to do that.
Okay. Ken?
Yeah, well, it just, each comment kind of begs an additional point of clarification. Two things, is that, one, I'm not clear, is the LCI supposed to be evaluating level of service for the entire city? I didn't think that was part of our contract. And the- the other is that level of service, I couldn't agree more, is that level of service does define a lot of things, but I don't think that the LCI process is meant to determine what level of services are our citizens willing to accept, versus what do they think that they might have to sacrifice in terms of the characteristics of our community. I think another important underlying component is that level of service, an increased level of service, doesn't have to come at the exchange of residential for commercial. I think that's a fallacy, and I think hopefully, part of your independent professional assessment will also be to look financially at the residential property taxes that we generate, the local option sales tax dollars that will be generated increasingly, because we have been primarily and predominantly residential. That tax rate doesn't necessarily change, just because you go from commercial to residential. The other fallacy is that commercial doesn't somehow also have a higher cost associated with it, because it does. And so I do think it's important for staff to make sure that this process doesn't become a politicized process, but that we're very clear about what our LCI process is supposed to be, what it's intended to be. It should not become a gauge for determining that we now need to convert our community elsewhere. So hopefully, the LCI process is going to be focused on Highway 9, which is what it was intended to do, and it's not going to become a mechanism to suddenly say, you know what, we really need to change the complexion of our community, and suddenly boost a bunch of additional commercials, simply to shift a level of service. I don't think I've heard from citizens that they're willing to trade off what they hold dear, because I think we are providing sidewalks, we are providing intersection improvements, and we're doing those things this year. We are providing parks. Yes, we need to do more, but we're doing those things. We haven't been putting those off, and we've got more revenue this year, according to Stacey Anglis, and our city manager, that we're going to continue to benefit from. So I hope that we're all going to be cautious that we don't sell our city out, just because now we're going to claim that we don't provide a level of service. I think we do provide a level of service. The question becomes that commercial in exchange for residential isn't always the answer. So thank you for professionalism, and I hope that we'll hear more from you in terms of some of those confidential discussions that perhaps don't need to be confidential.
Joe, I think you've--
Yeah, just real quick, Eric, thanks for being here. I happened to be at that presentation. I thought it was very well-run. I thought it was very informative. I thought the information was well-received. I personally, with all respect to you, don't think that two words coming out of your mouth are going to change the course of our city, okay? I, in hindsight, I mean, I was sitting there when you said it, and it didn't impress me as something that was earth-shattering or important. In fact, I'd heard the same statement in all the training that we attend as councilmembers, from the GMA and stuff like that. So maybe because I was more in tune with what you guys were saying, it wasn't a shocker for me. But I just want to say that I thought the meeting went real well. I thought the information was very, very informative, and I spoke to a lot of the citizens that were at that meeting, and I think they walked away with the same impression. So I hope we're not, I'm just trying to make sure you get a balanced view of opinions from that meeting. I think it went really, really well. And personally, I think we pay you guys money for an opinion, not something that we want to hear. The more diverse it is, the more value it has. So if you guys, if that concept threw up a red flag for you, I think it's your duty to tell us about that. And I happen to believe that confidentiality and getting some of that information is very, very important. You guys shared the information with us, so it should be available in the open records, but who it exactly came from, I think, is immaterial. So, thank you.
There, moving forward, is there anything direction you need, Chris, Eric? I guess if there's any direction, it would be the direction, if there's a vision of the council, or the direction of the council, to change directions. If the council is, if the direction is to keep going forward and keep plugging away, then I really don't need any direction. But I just wanted you to have-- I would support moving forward.
And I do have one follow-up request, more as a citizen than a council member. Because this council hasn't had a good discussion on financial sustainability and level of service, that needs to be had. Because I think our citizens deserve an answer on that, because they were promised something when we became a city, and now that story and that statement regarding sustainability, and what exactly level of service we could and could not have, that's being morphed as we move further and further. And I believe that statement needs to be, or that, I guess that vision needs to be clearly articulated with citizen input. Because, you know, we can talk about the 86 and 14% being unsustainable all day, but until you really look at how much commercial it would take to really change that ratio, you're talking almost a billion dollars' worth of commercial that we would need to be able to truly offset that commercial versus residential ratio. And so if you're, you know, we haven't had that discussion on how much commercial we're really talking about here, and I think citizens need to understand how much we're talking about. Because I think that's the decision that needs to be made. We don't need to dance around it, in other words.
Yeah. The only point I would make is, Urban Collage has been hiring, giving us your opinion. It's been said, I think, by Councilmember Longoria, if there are certain things that you guys feel you need to tell us, then that's your job to tell us. We don't have to follow that, we don't have to believe it. But, you know, I don't think, I think this is getting out of hand. I don't think we're really talking about adding more commercial or whatever, just on these statements. I don't think the direction of the council or our citizens or whatever is all about adding more commercial stuff. I just, I don't want this to get blown out of proportion, so.
Yeah, I just requested, I just requested that we have that discussion next month during our work session, which is--
I'm fine with the discussion.
--separate from you.
All right. Thank you. It's our last item. Thank you for being here tonight.